So I sent it to you, you should have it now?
Yes.
Um, just for the public hearing, like, that's one legal matter.
We'll take care of that.
Later.
That's not gonna happen.
Um, I don't have minutes for it. The one thing I do have is, um, I'm also with Bill Hill, so if he wants me to do thirty six minutes, so next time I'm gonna do five seconds.
And then, you didn't do whatever.
I think they're waiting here. I am wondering what you're gonna do. It's like usually, like, if I give them a list of which sort of, so I should have my which sort of tomorrow, because, yeah, usually Wednesday, so.
And did you get, did they get all the, the days?
They gave all the days. So one day they couldn't have it, and I actually had those with Bill Hill, we were done. My, it was on the twenty first.
And dinner, and dinner, are they gonna have it all time?
I don't know what they're doing. Maybe, let's say not.
Not at fifteen?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, let's do that. That's an excellent goal.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting for the Lawrence City Council. Today's date is April first, twenty twenty five. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Act of Twenty Twenty Two, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person at the city council chambers as well as remotely. Anybody that requests to be on Zoom, the city clerk have sent the link. This meeting is being transmitted both in Facebook and, um, in Fa- in Facebook as well as the YouTube, uh, Lawrence City Council channels. Madam Clerk, please, Rocco.
Councillor Levy. Councillor LaPlante.
Present.
Councillor Luzon.
Present.
Councillor Del Rosario.
Present.
Councillor Santiago.
Present.
Councillor Marmo.
Present.
Councillor Reyes.
Present.
Councillor Vice President Infante.
Present.
Councillor President Rodriguez.
Present.
Please join me for a moment of silence in honor of the men and women serving, uh, our police department.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor, there is no minute today. Uh, we're gonna go straight to public participation. The first person that we have in public participation is H. Malley. Name and address for the record. The rules for the, uh, public participation are as follow. Please refer to this council as a whole, not to any individual, not to any individual councillors. You're gonna have two and a half minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, you're gonna hear a beep or a sound indicating that you still have, you still have thirty seconds, uh, to continue. Name and address for the record, please.
Homayun Malley, fifty-three Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. We, the citizens, are united to support Lawrence Police Officers Union. Lawrence Police with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Bonilla, doing excellent job to protect our citizen. Lawrence Police, thank you for making Lawrence a safe city. Million thanks to our DPW U employees and leadership for making Lawrence a beautiful city with support of DPW Union. Inspection Department and employees, thank you for excellent job. We support your union. We must hire more inspector. Lawrence Public School with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Ralph Guerrero, one of the best superintendent in the history of Lawrence, on the way to become the best public school in the nation. Lawrence Teachers, thank you for gift of best education for the children of Lawrence. We are proud to support Lawrence Teachers Union. Lawrence One City Under God, we are proud to support our veterans. Thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for your service. We respectfully request, please fill two assistant for the Lawrence Veterans Office. We, the Laurentian, the champion of support of union from the police officers to brave firefighters, teachers, DPW Union, right of the union, for our, our teachers' union, we support. We, we must have a great commission on elders in our city. Lawrence always strong, Lawrence always unite. We pray for the safety of all police officers. This tin blue line, this best example of protect and serve. Lawrence Police, this union of pride and honor, we are excellent job for, we are proud to support Lawrence Police Union. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Rich Russell, Councillor Russell.
Good evening, Councillors. Rich Russell, thirty-four Cross Street. A quick comment about a recently departed Lawrence veteran, Robert Gagny, July twelfth, nineteen twenty-six, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, naval veteran of World War II and the Korean Conflict. May you have fair winds and following seas in your journey through eternity. In your absence, I will be saluting the American flag in your honor which you proudly served. Uh, I would also be it remiss if I failed to mention the passing of Army veteran and Lawrence Police Officer Sean McLellan. Uh, regarding agenda item one twenty-one twenty-five, I had the privilege of meeting Ron Laval at Veterans Day Celebration at the airport several years ago. It was an honor for me to have Ron request to take a selfie with me. I have been monitoring public safety radio transmissions for over fifty years. If a textbook were to be written on how to be a public safety dispatcher, Ron should be the author. Clear, concise, unflappable. Ron will be, it will be, Ron will be tough for the fire department to replace. May you always be upwind from all the smoke, and may all the smoke be from your frequent barbecues and your well-deserved retirement. Lastly, today is a political triple witching day. A city council meeting tonight, nomination papers became available at eight-thirty this morning. And thirdly, today is April Fool's Day. Coincidence, I think not. In closing, I would like to thank the governor for extending the remote hybrid meeting law for another two years. Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns.
The next person that we have is Brenda Rossi. Name and address for the record, please.
Brenda Rossi, one twenty-seven Chester Street. I gave you all the flyer. Alnap is back doing our East Bunny breakfast this year after, um, a lapse of three or four or five years since, um, but we'd, um, it's going to be on Saturday, April twelfth, from eight to eleven, the senior center, and we're partnering with the Recreation Department and the Veteran Service Department. And for the kids, we'll have a special guest of station eight, so please come, it's free, and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Melania Guerrero. Name and address for the record, please.
Can anyone translate?
Si, tenemos traductor.
Good evening. Can I talk in Spanish? I'll interpret it.
Perfect. Buenas tardes. Oh, sorry. Buenas tardes, uh, los presentes, verdad, y al, al, a las personas que están aquí, estamos agradecidos por ustedes prestar este tiempo para escuchar nuestra propuesta en el día de hoy.
Good afternoon to everyone that is here and is present, and thank you for listening to our proposal.
Y queremos, um, que el Señor Jesús le bendiga por prestar su tiempo, verdad, para escuchar esto que vamos a ver.
We'd like for Jesus Christ to bless all of you for your time to listen.
Aunque nuestra propuesta está dentro del renglón de la, um, nuevos asuntos, y es la ciento treinta veinticinco.
Even though our, uh, new proposal is found within the new, uh, sections, um, with the number one thirty twenty-five.
Sabemos que ustedes no van a tomar alguna decisión acerca de eso, en este momento queremos aprovechar la oportunidad para hablarle un poco acerca de ella.
We know that you're not going to make a decision about that just yet, but we'd like to take the opportunity to let you know, ah, we'd like to take the opportunity to let you know, uh, about it.
Um, lo que presentamos en esta propuesta no es la solicitud a una, un evento o a una marcha.
What we are proposing in that event is not necessarily, uh, a march.
Lo que presentamos en esta propuesta es una respuesta, una necesidad, que como líderes juveniles dentro de nuestras congregaciones, diferentes congregaciones aquí en la ciudad, hemos notado.
Por favor, más corto, para poder interpretarte apropiadamente. Comience de nuevo, repita si.
Bien, lo que presentamos en esta propuesta, más, okay, ya no vamos ajustando, lo que presentamos en esta propuesta más que una marcha, una actividad, es una solución, es una respuesta.
What we are proposing in this is more than just a march, it is a solution.
O una, um, respuesta, una necesidad, que como líderes juveniles dentro de nuestras congregaciones hemos notado.
It is a response, uh, to, uh, what we have noticed as youth leaders, things that we have, we have seen.
Somos Chris, un minuto. Bien, somos cristianos, y como cristianos, eso significa que modelamos el ejemplo de Jesús.
As Christians, uh, we model Jesus's example.
Y eso significa que hacemos lo que Cristo hizo en el tiempo que estuvo aquí en la tierra.
And that means that we do what Jesus did when he was here on earth.
Una de las cosas que él hizo fue ver la necesidad de su ciudad y responder a ella.
One of the things that he did was see the necessities of his town and did something about it.
Y nosotros vemos nuestra necesidad de nuestros jóvenes, y por esto traemos esta propuesta.
And we see the needs of our youth, which is why we're presenting this proposal.
Así que queremos hacer esta marcha.
If you have anybody that want to continue your points, they can continue. The time is limited, but if there is anyone else who wants to continue, they can, with the same intention, they can.
Perfecto, muchísimas gracias.
Name and address for the record.
Entonces, como, como decíamos.
Nombre y dirección.
Oh, disculpe. Mi nombre es Joanna, um, cinco Milker Street, Methuen.
Cinco?
Milker Street, Methuen.
Uh, my name is, uh, Joanna, uh, five thousand mil.
Five Milker Street.
Five Milker Street.
Um, como ya continuaba diciendo, el plan es poder responder a una necesidad aquí en la juventud de Lawrence.
As she was saying to continue that point, the, the point is to, to bring, uh, help to the needs of the youth of Lawrence.
Y queremos llamar la atención haciendo esta marcha el junio veintiuno.
We would like to, uh, bring attention to this march for June twenty-first.
Abriéndolo a que todos los jóvenes que están en la ciudad se nos unan.
Opening it so that all of the youth in the city can, uh, come together.
Sería preparado por diferentes iglesias.
It would be organized by different churches.
Y entonces estaríamos marchando desde la Essex Street hasta el Parque O'Connor.
And we would be marching from Essex Street to O'Connor Park.
Terminando con un concierto.
Finishing with a concert.
Donde se le va a dar información a los jóvenes de las diferentes iglesias.
Where the youth will be receiving different information of the different churches.
Y el plan es que sean evangelizados.
And the plan is for them to be evangelized.
Esperamos que esta propuesta sea aprobada cuando se somete a votación.
We hope that this proposal is approved when it is subject to a vote.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, all these names are gonna be submitted for the record. Now, we are going to top of the agenda unless there is any, uh, subcommittee items that we would like to take first. Uh, members and chairs of the different committees, anything that we would like to discuss first?
There's a couple here from ordinance committee as well.
Yeah, a couple of ordinance. Yes, we're gonna go, uh, whatever you guys decide to go first, that's fine.
I have an ordinance.
Okay. All right, uh, we're going on top of that, uh, committee reports. Uh, we have committee report from the Biden Finance, we have no committee, from the Housing, we have no committee report. And now we are going to ordinance committee. Mrs. Chair from the ordinance committee.
Yeah, we have one person is here right now, this is our document one fifteen twenty-five, preaching an event, uh, on July seventeenth and eighteenth, uh, at twenty, two, twenty twenty-five this year, five to seven P.M. So the ordinance committee, uh, sent this document up to the full council with a favorable recommendation, just check on that. With the, I believe there's a condition.
There is an order, uh, there is a motion to.
And we, and I believe that we did get something from the Recreation Department saying that that, those dates are free, so the motion is to send this up to the council with a favorable recommendation to approve, that's the motion.
All right, there is a motion on the table to approve item one fifteen twenty-five, properly second, discussion on the item. There is none, all of them, please say aye.
Aye.
There is, have it.
Mr. Um, Mr. Rodriguez, you're all set. You're all set.
Thank you.
Hey, pass, you're good.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
So we're going, do you wanna, do you wanna just do ordinance? Uh, I mean, it is, unless you wanna go first, let me have four people. All right. So just, just, just present personnel. Let's go on, uh, let's go to personnel committee, we have a few candidates here from personnel com, uh, that are in the personnel committee. Madam Vice President Infante and the Chair of the Personnel Committee, please present us with the different items.
Thank you through you, Council President. The Personnel Committee met last week. First item we have is item ninety-five dash twenty-five, the confirmation to reappoint William Collins to the Municipal Airport Commission with the term expiring July fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. This was sent up as a favorable recommendation, and I made that as a formal motion.
Thank you.
So motion on the table, properly second. Mr. Collins, um, you're up. Uh, he's very well-known at the city council. If you can give us.
Good evening. Mr. President, members of the council, it's a quick change from back there. Good evening.
Welcome.
What can I, uh, what can I offer you?
Just, just all those, some of your experience as, as, as one of the commissioner, and then any question that the council might have.
Sure. Uh, former pilot, uh, went to Emory Riddle Aviation Academy Overseas Division, Commercial Pilot Ground School, member of the Lawrence Airport Commission for the past, uh, fifteen years, uh, under, I think, four mayors, at least four mayors. Uh, it's been a privilege to serve in the commission now that I no longer fly, I could stay active with the aviation community, and, uh, like I always like to boast about, if you indulge me, we're the only department in the city that's in the black, and, uh, we're gonna stay that way.
Yeah.
And, and also, we didn't use any ARPA money. Just wanna say that publicly, the only department, even other enterprise fund departments dipped into that money, we didn't get a penny. So we're proud of that, we run the airport lean and mean, with different kind of a culture there, and we've had a great success.
Thank you for, thank you for the input. Councillors, any questions?
Council President.
Uh, Councillor Vice President Infante.
Thank you, I just have a quick comment. I wanna say thank you to Bill. Uh, sometimes our airport manager does have airport affairs outside of the city, in the great, outside of the greater Merrimack Valley area, and every time we need backup, you are there, I mean, you have to be here, but, but you know, you know about the items, you know about the budget. Uh, we, items for the airport are never delayed because you are always on top of it when Mr. Uraina can't be here, and I, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice, Vice President.
All right, uh, the next, hello, hold on. Uh, the next councillor that we have that would like to speak is Councillor LaPlante.
Very briefly, I think experience matters. I think experience in municipal government makes a difference, because there's certain things that you can bring to the table, your historical context and references that are important. It's good to have a solid mix. So I know that we're gonna be dealing with people who are relatively new, um, but having someone who's been here for a little while, I think is also important, so I just wanna point that out. You've been on this board since two thousand and ten.
Correct.
Is that correct? So fifteen years, that's a, that's a, that's a decent amount of time serving on that board, so.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for your continued interest, your continued enthusiasm, and I appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you, Councillor.
It's a pleasure, councillor. Thank you.
It is important, councillors, it is important to recognize that, that the manager of, of the A, Lawrence Municipal Aper, Francisco Breaña, he's online here with us, in case they have, have any questions for him, he's available. Councillors, any other questions when it comes to the candidate in front of us?
Sir President.
Uh, Councillor Santiago.
Uh, I have a comment from, eh, Bill. I wanna say thank you for serve our community, eh, thank you for do the great job you do for our city, and of course, for the, eh, for the building as well. You know, like my, my college said, eh, you know everything about the area, and you are attend any, eh, issues, you prevent, eh, many issue we can, eh, have before the meeting. Thank you for do great job, and congratulations.
Thank you, councillor, we're a team.
All right. Uh, we, Bill, uh, he's, he's one of the people that help us out at the city council. Uh, he work for us as well, so thank you, Bill, for everything you do for the city council as well as the Aper. Any other questions or comment, councillors? Councillor Marmo.
I'm not, I don't, I don't really say much, but, um, I feel like it's important, um, to take the time to recognize when someone does a good job. Um, just to say that you are a pleasure to work with, the city is lucky to have you, um, not only working, uh, with us, uh, behind closed doors, but, uh, in the airport as well. Um, I just believe that the city is in good hands, uh, having you serve as a member of the committee and just, um, just being part of, like, uh, our, our world here at, at city council as well, so.
Thank you.
Just saying thank you for, for being amazing.
Thank you so much, councillor, appreciate that.
It is important, it's also important to recognize that Bill is a veteran, um, he served also in, in a different capacity in the city of Lawrence. Any other questions, councillor? Councillor Levy?
Only a comment, just to recognize and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
So you are a plus, not just only for the airport, but also for the city. Thank you so much, because you are always here, it doesn't matter if it's raining, if it's snowing, if whatever that happened, are you here?
I was a mailman. Neither rain nor snow, nor, uh, all of that stuff. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you so much.
All right, if no, any other comments, I'll call the questions, all of them, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? There is, have it, thank you, Bill.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, councillors.
Madam Vice President Infante, please go with the next item.
And the next item, Council President, is item ninety-six dash twenty-five, to confirm the reappointment of Sharon Burchall to the Municipal Airport Commission with the term expiring July fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. The committee sent this up as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Thank you.
There is a motion on the table, uh, properly second, discussion. Councillor LaPlante?
Um, similar to, uh, to Mr. Collins, Ms. Burchall actually has been serving longer than, uh, Mr. Collins, which is amazing. Uh, you've been in Airport Commission since two thousand and eight.
Yes.
Is that correct? So again, I think there's a, we're gonna have some other folks coming up for nominations here, confirmations, but I think what we're looking at is, uh, people who are interested in serving, this is a volunteer board still, right?
Yes, it is.
Although I am seeing changes throughout the city on that, but that's still a volunteer board, and I appreciate your willingness to continue to serve, and I do think experience does matter, so I think it's fantastic that you still have the enthusiasm to serve, and I know that you're a Methuen resident, and, right, by law, that's okay, you're supposed to have that by law.
Yes.
But I still think, we got, I still think, even though you're from Methuen, I still think of you as long.
Lawrence is my hat.
So you got it, so thank you very much, Council President.
No problem. There is, it is important to recognize that as per the ordinance, uh, one person from outside of the city.
Three.
Three people from outside of the city, it's allowed.
Yes.
Uh, and you're one of them.
Yes.
So thank you for serving the city of Lawrence.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Um, any other councillor, Vice President Infante?
Thank you, I do wanna say, uh, we, we just mentioned so many great things about Bill, but it's because we see him more often. However, I do wanna acknowledge the fact that you've been on the board longer, and the fact that you've been on the board for so many years is a testament to the work that you've been providing to the airport, so I thank you, and I'm sure my colleagues share the same sentiment. I thank you for your services to the city of, city of Lawrence.
And I'm the chair too, the chair.
Madam Chair. Excuse me, sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, it also, just for the record, expiration date for this appointment will be in seven twenty, uh, July twen, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Councillors, any other questions? Are here, no, so at this point I'll call the questions, all of them, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? There is, have it, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Vice President.
And you're all welcome to come and have a tour whenever you want, just call Francisco.
Just organize it, let us know.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any, uh, Madam Vice President Infante, item ninety-seven twenty-five.
Item twenty-seven dash twenty-five, uh, to confirm the appointment of Savell Ortiz to the Municipal Airport Commission with the term expiring July fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. This was brought up to the full council as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Okay, for discussion, yeah, there's a motion to approve. Uh, it's been properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Thank you, councillor, uh, Council President. It, it has come to my attention, I, I could not make the personnel meeting last week, but the packet for this item was not complete. We did not have a resume for this individual. Um, I do understand that they were interviewed, so I do, and they are here for both, for ninety-seven and the next item that we will be discussing, so I do wanna give the opportunity for the individuals to, to speak with the council, but I would prefer to table this item until we have all the, all the paperwork, um, that's needed.
Uh, yeah, if that's their desire, we can, we can leave it open if anybody have any questions, and then we can hear the candidate out about that. The application is there, but not the resume.
Council President.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Thank you, and I actually know Mr. Ortiz very well, and I know he's, he's great, but the reason, the reason why I'm suggesting this is, then, uh, we get into the habits again with department heads not, not providing complete documents for items, and I, I don't want to get back into that habit.
No problem, I understand, just to keep it consistent. Um, consistency is important. So if you, if, anybody have a question for the candidate in the meantime?
Council President.
Councillor Marmo?
Through you, Council President, so I'm not as familiar with you, so, um, I have a special interest with, uh, the airport myself, um, and with that being said, I would like to get to know what brought your interest in wanting to become a member, um, what experience do you have, like, what would you, what do you bring to the table, uh, to be a, a productive, uh, member to this commission?
Absolutely, good evening, council. Um, I'm a Lawrence native, uh, I, I went to the Lawrence in the middle school.
Name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Uh, Savie Lortiz, twenty-three Pleasant. Um, I'm, I, I am a Lawrence native, um, I, I went to the Lawrence in middle, middle school, I also attended Grand Lawrence Tech, and graduated from Northern Nexus and UMS Amherst, and, uh, with the degree in finance. I've been in banking for five years, where I have, uh, reviewed construction budgets, uh, have done commercial lending, especially around this area. Um, right now, I'm working in Boston with tech companies, um, um, providing them, um, lending solutions for, for their startup cost. Uh, what I, what I bring to the table is financial analysis, especially for the new project approved by the FAA, um, for the new building, um, at the airport. Um, and what brought me back to Lawrence was giving back. You know, now I'm working in Boston, I, I wanted to, to stay in the community and, and start giving back.
Thank you. Any other questions for the candidates?
I have a comment.
I have a quick comment. Councillor Vice President Infante?
Thank you. For my colleagues, I just wanna highlight something about Mr. Ortiz, when he was a student at GLTS, he was actually one of the very, very few that had the opportunity to be recognized by the White House, um, for his scholar achievements, and I will be, once, once the document is completed, I will be so, a hundred percent supporting you, and I know, I know what you bring to the table, and, and it's going to be an asset to the, to the commission.
Thank you. Um, any other comments, questions? Right, uh, youth, uh, youth people, seeing youth, uh, people in front of us is, is a satisfaction. Uh, nothing wrong with serving when you getting more experience, but seeing people, uh, at your age to wanted to serve, that's, that's, that's great, so thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Uh, any other questions before the Council President?
Only a comment, Mr. President.
Councillor Levy?
Yes.
Uh, at the meeting, at the personal meeting also, Mr. Ureña gave him, you know, a very good reference on how he's been doing, how, about his board and, and everything that he's doing for the city of Lawrence.
Thank you, Councilor.
And I wanna congratulate on that too.
Uh, any other questions? Alright, uh, Madam Vice President Infante, you might proceed.
I would like to make a motion to table item ninety-seven dash twenty-five.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion to table, properly second, no discussion on the table matters, uh, Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So I'll see you next meeting, the fifteenth.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Item ninety-eight twenty-five, Madam Vice President Infante.
Thank you through you, Council President. Item ninety-eight dash twenty-five is to confirm the appointment of D.O. Cruz to the Municipal Airport Commission with a term expiring July fifteen, twenty-twenty-six. This was sent up with a favorable recommend, recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
There is a motion to, motion, uh, to approve, properly second. Uh, Madam Vice President Infante.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, item ninety-eight dash twenty-five has the same situation as the previous item. Uh, the resume for Mr. Cruz was not included in the item packet.
Alright, uh, we proceed with the consistency of the committee.
I have a question.
Councilor, Councilor LaPlante?
Is this a reappointment, or is this a new appointment?
New.
Reappointment.
So this one and Mrs. Surriel's?
No, this, oh, hold on a second. So this is a new?
This is a new one?
Yes.
So Mrs. Su, Mrs. Surriel and yourself, uh, two new, two appointments.
Correct. Um, Counselors, any questions for the candidates? I think that we should open up the same opportunities.
Um, I'm gonna, thank you. Through you, Council President, I'll keep it, uh, pretty much traditional and the same line of questioning. Um, just, uh, let me know, uh, what is your background, what, what brought you to have the interest in, uh, partaking and becoming a member, um, for the Airport Commission? And what, what would you say, uh, background and experience you have would make you an asset to the team?
Of course. Uh, good evening, my name is Dioni Cruz, uh, Eight Oliver Street, Haverhill. Thank you for your time. Um, so I learned how to fly out of, uh, Lawrence, so I also am part owner over there out of, of aircraft, and I work out of Hanscom Airport, sorry, I have a throat problem, but I work out of Hanscom Airport. I worked there for the last three years. I'm familiar with the TSA procedures and, uh, airport procedures, so I think I would bring, uh, attention to detail as well as, uh, known security. And I have a passion to help children to get into, um, aviation, and I'm excited about programs that are being introduced now. Uh, so the Voca has a program for the aviation, uh, maintenance, and then now the Lawrence School is trying to do fifteen kids per semester, so that's something that I can get involved in as well.
Thank you. Well, you just talking to the person that brought out that program.
Perfect.
Alright, Counselors, any questions? Alright, uh, if, uh, if, if Counselors, uh, don't mind, do you, would, would you allow them to join through soon? Next meeting in case that they have something, uh, that, we usually, we usually require you guys to be here for the confirmation in person, but the fact that they here, I think that having them through soon, if you guys prefer, or come over, it is your choice.
Uh, yeah, whatever the council decides.
Yeah. Uh, Counselors, any other questions for the candidate?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Councilor Levy?
So also, he, he's gonna be one of the members that is allowed, um, on the Airport Commission from outside of the city of Lawrence.
Hmm, he's from Haverhill.
Uh, and you say also that you wants to come back to school, or you haven't, you own a school?
Uh, no, um, just that, uh, I will have my instructor, um, certif, certification soon, so I can help. Uh, I already started, um, in an unofficial capacity, helping, um, some youth, um, with their, with their flying.
With the flight.
Yeah, but I, I did go to the Oliver School here, I did, uh, spend two years at, uh, Lawrence High as well. So I basically lived either in Haverhill or Lawrence all my life.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Council President.
Council Vice President Infante.
Thank you, same thing for, like, the previous one, from what I'm hearing, amazing background, definitely, uh, qualifications that will also be an asset to the commission. You will also get my support, but this is, again, this is just a procedural thing, and, um, I'm happy to, I'm happy that, that you're, you're willing to, to give back to our community.
Absolutely, thank you.
This is, uh, this is something that I'm very pleased to see, people that actually have expertise and, and, and experience. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Um, I entertain a motion.
Motion to table?
Same.
So motion to table, properly second. Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you for your time, Counsel.
Next time you're gonna have the option, so either, uh, join us through soon, or come in in person. Alright, that is for public safety, that is not before, so we go straight to, uh, the ordinance committee.
Thank you very much. The first item in ordinance is document two fifty-two twenty-four, no parking area at four O-two Lowell Street, was sent up to the full council with a recommendation order of public hearing, that's the motion.
That's the motion to order a public hearing, properly second discussion. Are here none? Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item four ninety-four twenty-four.
This is no parking in one sixty Garden Street, was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation order of public hearing, that's the motion.
There's a motion, uh, on the table, properly second, um, discussion. Are here none? Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item, uh, five seventy-four twenty-four. Okay. There's a public hearing, actually.
Uh, five seventy-four twenty-four is to amend the zoning on Jackson Street from R-two to B-one, was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and that's the motion.
Motion to order a public hearing, properly second discussion. Are here none? Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item thirty-four twenty-five.
This item is to remove a handicap parking at fifty-seven Bigelow Street, was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
The order is to, the motion is to order a public hearing, properly second discussion. Are here none? Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item thirty-five twenty-five.
This is, uh, remove handicap parking at thirty-nine East Table Street, was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
Second.
The motion is to order a public hearing, properly second discussion. Are here none? Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item thirty-six twenty-five.
Uh, this is to remove handicap parking at sixty-seven Farm Street, was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
Second.
Alright, the motion is to order a public hearing, properly second discussion. Are here none? Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item forty-six twenty-five.
Forty-six twenty-five is rezoning of a portion of old city land off of Bay State Road and Jordan Street from General Industrial I-two to Open Space Recreation, or OCR. This was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the table, um, properly second discussion. Councilor LaPlante?
So this is the, this is the parcel where they're looking, near the Boys and Girls Club, uh, they're looking to create a park, and I know that my colleague from District D has been very influential on this. Uh, the idea here is that there is like two or three different votes that we're expecting on this, and what was the advice that we received from the Planning Director was to essentially table them all, and when the public hearing is, uh, order a public hearing, that we, they do it all at the same time. So I'm not sure if it's better if we just approve this now, and the clerk can, can just hold off on sending it till she gets all three, or we can table it. I guess, if the, if three, Council President, the clerk is fine with us passing it tonight, and just kinda holding it off until the three of them are done.
I think that, um, it is to order a public hearing, we can wait until, uh, we can approve to order the public hearing, and then the city clerk can work with McCarthy to make sure that the dates are consistent.
So the motion is to make a, order a public hearing, and I'll, I'll ask you to call the question if there's no.
Uh, there is no questions on the matter? Alright, um, I'll call the questions. Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, just work with, uh, Mr. McCarthy to make sure that the dates are consistent. Item fifty-five twenty-five.
Fifteen-minute parking at Camia Market, uh, one sixty Union Street, uh, was sent up to the full council with a recommendation order of public hearing, and that's the motion.
Motion is to order a public hearing, properly second, um, any questions? Are here none? Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item eighty twenty-five.
So the handicap parking on Basswood Street, which is adjacent to twenty-three Alder Street, was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and that's the motion.
Alright, there's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. Are here none? Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item one fourteen twenty-five. Greenway five K.
Um, goodness, reflected. So, um, uh, one fourteen twenty-five is the Greenway five K on August the tenth at twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, from seven AM to one PM at Manchester Street Park. Starts there and ends at, ends at the Market Park. This was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. Are here none. I just wanna make a remark on this, on this item. Counselors, if you guys can come, come and, and join Mr. LaPlante and myself, he always win. Always. I have my little son going behind him. Uh, but I mean, uh, join us, because it's a beautiful five K, it's throughout the white lines, as we call it, and then, uh, you go all the way to, uh, the other side of the, of that, uh, of the, of the Speaker River.
So, and Mr. Rodriguez's son is very fast, so, um, as hard as it is to believe that you're looking.
He's running like crazy. I'm behind all the way looking. Yeah. Well, please join us, we, that's a very fun, um, five K. Sure.
I heard the Counselor say that there was a date change.
It's, it was on August the eleventh originally, and it's, it is August the tenth is the new date. So it was reflected in the agenda. Whoever did that, kudos to them, so thank you.
Alright, uh, any questions? Um, Solos and Felipe, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item one sixteen twenty-five.
Uh, this is approving the alter, alteration of on-street parking plan at and around the Henry K. Oliver School. This was sent up to the full council with, with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that in the form of a motion.
There is a motion on, on the table to order a public hearing, properly second discussion. Councilor LaPlante?
So, uh, this is a significant, uh, changes that are gonna be going on at the Oliver School for the fall, once the school opens up. And so there's a series of changes, parking changes, et cetera, that are going to be, uh, proposed there. Um, and so what we typically do in the ordinance committee is we ask the police department to do their, to do their, uh, reviews, and then bring it up, but because of the timing issue, we did talk to the police department. We do expect that we will get some sort of documentation from them, giving us their, their status of the review before the public hearing is made. So I, we feel confident that, uh, we can order a public hearing, and that the police department, uh, will have something to provide guidance at the full council level at that time.
Uh, I also, uh, spoke to the COO of this, of the Lawrence Public Schools. In regard to this matter, there is gonna be a huge traffic impact around that area. Uh, the fact that we have done, uh, different, um, street changes in terms, in terms of, uh, one side to another side, one way, and stuff like that around there, that, that are gonna cause a tremendous impact around that location. That's District C, Councilor De Rosario. Uh, District B, sorry, Councilor, uh, Councilor Luzon. And, uh, but that's right around, uh, the other districts around the border. So what I asked them to do is to actually look into this matter from the professional perspective, um, and not just changing one street from one side to another side. So to hire a professional to be able to get the best, the best recommendation. And, uh, they were looking into that. I don't know if they're gonna be able to do it based on time, time issues, uh, or time sensitivity matters, but, uh, I think it will be essential, because that's a significant traffic impact that is gonna be on that area. Alright, any other questions?
Council President.
Council Luzon.
Uh, and this is what I understand, and I, and, and just for the record, I receive many, many calls from constituents in that area. They already have issues with parking. Uh, before the construction, did any, um, parking study was done? I say, look, okay, uh, it's concerning, uh, not having, uh, a study in parking and how that will impact my district, uh, 'cause we already have issues, and you all know that, especially the counselors at large. We already have issues with parking in the area, and not having a study done is gonna be a very negative impact, uh, on the area. So thank you for requesting that, uh, but I also would like to request that, um, if it's possible, that the residents get something in, like a flyer, uh, for the, for the public hearing. And if, if, hopefully, we can get something from DPW to inform residents that this is happening, 'cause I know they have a lot to add, to, to set, to say about this. There's already, the impact is, is, is a negative impact in, in the area.
Okay, definitely. Uh, I think that as a council, we can actually work something out when it comes to printing some stuff, and maybe be able to deliver those. I don't know how, but I mean, we can figure something out.
Uh, thank you, Council President.
Uh, Council LaPlante?
I would just, uh, recommend to my colleague from District B to maybe contact the school department herself independently. Uh, in addition, uh, there's, uh, she's gonna be the strongest advocate for the people she represents, and, and, and having that conversation is gonna be helpful. I, I, I think, and listening to the discussion at the ordinance committee, uh, there's not gonna be a good option. It's gonna be what's the best out of the bad options. I think that's what you're gonna face. And, but having some input from the district counselor, whose district most impacts this, I think, would be helpful, and I would take my cues from my colleague, um, based on those kinds of conversations. Thank you.
Council President.
Councilor Santiago?
And, so, me, how you say you don't know how we send the flyer for the constituents? And the last meeting, we received the, the letter from the contractor, from the, from the electricity. Everyone have the, the, the letter, and that's the same way, the same way they can, they can send the flyer for the resident to invite the community for the public hearing. That's the one first. And the second one, and for the construction, for the school, uh, the common street, uh, or the Campano Park, doesn't have any mirrors. Now, we have mirror there.
No, because this is the, this is the, uh,
Oliver.
Uh, yes, correct. Yes, yes, go ahead.
And that's another consent.
I was confused with the other school, sorry, I was thinking about the Legischool.
Yeah, that's another consent that I have.
That's why I mentioned District C, I was thinking about A. But yeah, Oliver School.
Council President.
Council Vice President Infante?
Thank you. A suggestion to my colleague, I had a, a situation with the Frost School that I had to reach out to every single resident on that street. Uh, the CEO, the COO of the LPS is amazing, she's an amazing resources. If you, resource, if, if you reach out to her and identify, I know it says on and around Oliver, identify the exact streets or areas that will be affected. Uh, I also have a template that I can, that I can share with you when I reached out to Hamlet Street residents that, um, I also shared with LPS, and, and they, you know, on their end, they gave me the thumbs up, but they're a great resource, and I'm sure you'll, you'll figure something out.
Thank you. Councilor De Rosario?
Through you, and, and it's great to add, right now, I'm afraid, ba, base my opinion, which that day, I actually braced my opinion, I wasn't part of making the decision how the school was gonna be designed. So on that day, I was asking questions, 'cause those questions raised up, but I was criticized by, by, even colleagues. But I was trying to fight the battle, trying to make awareness of how bad that was gonna be, 'cause right now, you're counting two schools, but you're also gonna have the Abbott moving into the Lawrence, the old Lawrence High. So I was trying to raise that awareness in that meeting, and I, and I've been criticized, so I'm afraid I braced my opinion. But again, it's directly, it's directly to the school department, and we need to all get together, and, and mostly, Councilor from District B, and bring the concern for the constituents more than anything. But at that point in time, I, I, I mean, it's, it's my neighbor, well, it's one city at the end of the day. And, and the traffic, if it impacts Lawrence Street, it will impact the whole city. It's a domino effect. So I will, I will go back, and that's why I was trying to raise concern on that day. But we all need to get together and, 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 you know, some type of a plan, 'cause losing parking spot, I, I don't think will be acceptable. It might be needed for what division is, but the crisis that we have on parking, it, losing parking spot on our design, it's, it's, it's terrible at this point in time, so.
Yeah, and, uh, now that I, that I'm, that I'm focusing my, my head when it comes to the Oliver School, uh, Councilor Vallano, then Councilor Vallano, now, now Senator Vallano, he, he brought up that issue about having a potential parking, parking spaces available for the teachers on the backside of that, uh, of the school, and the other side, close to the, uh, uh, close to the park that we have that down, uh, at the end of the, one of the streets. So yes, he was requesting a traffic study around that area. I was confused when he, when I said, uh, no, that it was not requested, because I was thinking about the, the Legischool. On the Legischool, I don't remember. On the Lehi School, I don't remember nothing about traffic study, but on the Oliver School, yes, it was a request. And, uh, and potentially, we have some type of recommendation around that, but I mean, I can't remember. But yes, and around the Oliver School, it was some type of request from the council at the moment. Any other questions in regard to this matter?
Council President.
Council Levitt.
Yeah, just only, um, not too long ago, I think, so that I called, uh, I would call it, uh, Luzon, Wendy. I just do let her know about a couple of constituents that were calling, principal during the time of the snow. How bad was the area? There was no parking. There was, you know, and how narrow, well, most of it's, uh, uh, inclusive for the owners of the house, they were not getting any parking space around the area. They has to go very far away to, to park. So, I think so that, yes, that which, are we looking for, uh, the stories? Is there is anyone, or just to recommend to have a, a parking story, uh, around there?
All right, any other questions or concerns?
Yes, a comment, Council President, if I may.
Council Luzon.
I, I don't, I'm trying to understand how, and correct me, Infante, how can you build a school this big without taking in consideration parking? So, it, it's very concerning, 'cause it's not small. Uh, and then we have the same situation at the Lehi, Lehi School, 'cause that's where we're getting a lot of calls too. My, my colleague knows, and, and the councillor at large, you, you know, that is an issue. So, how can you build such a, a big building without taking in consideration the parking in the city? That is very concerning, Council President. Thank you.
No problem.
Council President.
Councilor De Rosario.
One last thought, and as great as the OPC is, as great as she is, as great that they move, they always put us on the spot, 'cause they come at the last time. Right now, the school has a day, right? And they bring that at the end. Tell me that they didn't realize that at the beginning. So, they bring it at the end. Right now, we have issues, you're gonna have issues with constituents, but you cannot, you know, tell the school, this is not gonna happen. They're gonna have to create something. And it happens every time the Lawrence Public School have an issue. They come in at the last minute to make an adjustment or to ask for money when there's the last time that you can just bring it back. So, we need also to bring that to them and tell them to bring things on time and, and communicate with us on time. 'Cause they bring us, they're great, but they bring us the last. They know how to do it. Once you're on the spot, this is, they throw it right there. There's nothing we can do. And, and that's us. Like I told in that meeting, it is us that we have to deal with the constituents, not them.
All right, uh, councilors, any other questions in regard to this matter? This is to order a public hearing. Uh, Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ice habit. So, now, we're going on top of, the top of the agenda, which is public hearings. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the notice for item forty-six, I mean, uh, 46923, which is Washington Street, no overnight parking outside from Manchester, Manchester to Lake Street. Please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 1, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the City Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, and in accordance with recent revised City Council Rule 2, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation in person and remotely to accommodate participants with health considerations that prevent them from participating in person. To receive access codes for remote participation, please contact the city clerk at eileen.bernal@cityoflawrence.com or 978-620-3230. The meeting may be viewed on Facebook and YouTube. The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following subparagraph in the proper alphabetical order to Section 10.36.030 of the Municipal Code, Restricted Parking on Certain Streets. Washington Street, East Side, no overnight parking between Manchester Street and Lake Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
All right, uh, councillors, any questions in regard, I mean, sorry. Uh, public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Councillors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve and wait the 30 days.
There's a motion to approve and wait the 30 days, properly second discussion. Uh, Washington Street goes from District D to District C. I believe one Washington Street is part of District D, just for the record.
There's, there's areas this receipt, it's, it's crossing Manchester.
Oh, crossing Manchester, yeah, all right. All right, any questions in regard to this matter, councillors? I hear none. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ice habit. Uh, Madam, Madam Clerk, please read the notice for item 36924, uh, together with 37024, 37124, 37524, 37724, 38024, 42024, 42124, 43024, and 43824. Uh, motion to, can I get a motion to wait the preamble?
Motion to wait the preamble.
There's a motion to wait the preamble, properly second discussion. I hear none. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ice habit. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Notice, um, the purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to the revised ordinances of the City Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following subparagraphs to Section 10.36.450 of the Municipal Code, Daycare Drop-Off Zone in the proper, proper alphabetical order. Document number 369-24, Cornish Street, West Side, from a point eighteen feet northeast of Montgomery Street to a point thirty-eight feet northeast of Montgomery Street. Document number 370-24, Berkeley Street, South Side, from a point eighty feet west of Saunders Street to a point one hundred feet west of Saunders Street. Document number 371-24, Park Street, South Side, from a point twenty feet west of Utah Street to a point forty feet west of Utah Street. Document number 375-24, Saratoga Street, East Side, from a point one hundred and thirty-eight feet north of Buswell Street to a point one hundred and fifty-eight feet north of Buswell Street. Document number 377-24, Ferry Street, North Side, from a point eighty-eight feet east of Kendall Street to a point one hundred and eight feet east of Kendall Street. Document number 380-24, Lennox Street, North Side, from a point one hundred and twenty feet west of South Broadway to a point one hundred and forty feet west of South Broadway. Document number 420-24, High Street, East Side, from a point one hundred and seventeen feet southwest of Linder Court to a point one hundred and thirty-seven feet southwest of Linder Court. Document number 42124, Bennington Street, West Side, from a point one hundred and thirty feet north of Park Street to a point one hundred and fifty feet north of Park Street. Document number 430-24, East Haverhill Street, North Side, from a point one hundred and eighty feet east of Kendall Street to a point two hundred feet east of Kendall Street. And document number 438-24, Prospect Street, East Side, from a point three hundred and forty feet northwest of Grove Street to a point three hundred and sixty feet northwest of Grove Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
All right, uh, public hearings for the item previously mentioned are, it's open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on any of those items?
Uh, good evening, councillors. The name's still Rich Russell, 34 Cross Street. The acoustics, the microphone, the acoustics in my hearing are not making it. This system's gotta be improved. Uh, it, it appears to me that childcare has become a cottage industry in Lawrence. Uh, every agenda, we see so, at least several. This time, there's ten, and then there's one on, uh, new business. So, there's eleven people seeking childcare parking. Now, I have several questions. First of all, have all of these people that are looking for these childcare parking things, have they been vetted by the state? Are they approved to be a natural childcare facility? Or is this something that they're just doing, oh, I'm gonna be a childcare, take care of that? The second thing is, why is there no time limit on this parking thing? They are, they are in effect taking pa, parking, we, parking is a valuable commodity in Lawrence. They are taking a thing, how, how long is, how long is the parking being, uh, a limit in effect for these things? And the third question I have is, how can you allow childcare facilities on anything above a first floor? On this, the ones that you just read, there are two that are on the second floor. To me, that is a, a pure and simple safety hazard. Those are my comments. Uh, again, if you people have any answers, I think it would be nice if the public knew about them. Thank you.
All right, any, anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? I hear none. At this time, public hearing is now closed. We are going to entertain independent motions to approve or not approve, uh, every single one of them. We're gonna start with item 36924. Councillors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There is a motion to approve, properly second discussion. I hear none. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ice habit. Item 372, 37024, what's the motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Can I hear a second? Properly second discussion. I hear none. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ice habit. Item 37124.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, properly second. Discussion. That, um, that's, yeah. Item 37124, uh, childcare parking for 212 Parking Street, first floor. Uh, can you, there is a motion for that item, properly, properly second.
Discussion.
Discussion. Item 37124. Man, uh, Councilor Esposito Infante.
Thank you, Council President. Our confidential secretary brought something, uh, that could be a concern, we're not a hundred percent sure, to the city clerks. I just wanna, through you, if we can give the city clerk an opportunity to...
Sure. My, my lamb clerk.
Sure, the, um, confidential secretary just stated that she believes that Park Street is a no-parking street. So, we really cannot be adding parking if there's, you're saying there's no parking, or is it parking meters? There's no parking?
No, there's no parking.
So, there's no parking. So, usually, the police would note that in their report and not recommend it. We've had that situation on other spots where there's literally no parking on a street, so they say they will not add a handicap, or they will not add. Um, so, it did come back with a letter from the police saying, with the dimension, so I presume that it was a parking street. Uh, but if it is a no-parking street, we should not have it, because you really can't add parking where there's no parking.
That, if it is a prohibition of a parking there, we, we cannot, we cannot add for specific reasons. Uh, but I mean, I think that, uh, we can go back and take a look at that situation. I, I entertain a, a motion.
Motion to table item 371-24.
Second.
All right, there is a motion on the table, no discussion on the table matters. Uh, properly second discussion, I mean, sorry. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ice habit. Item 37524, childcare parking for eleven, uh, 111 Saratoga Street, second floor. Uh, councillors, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Councilor Luzon.
Do have a quick question. When, I got one request from one of my constituents, uh, about this parking. When they, when, can anyone explain the process after this gets approved? Are they gonna request, 'cause what we, uh, in the previous participation, we hear like a very, uh, concerning questions. Once this gets approved from here, Council President, are they gonna get, uh, an application? Okay, so, after this gets approved here at City Council, are they gonna get an application? Do they have to submit any, uh, proof of, of childcare facility? How this is gonna work?
When they, uh, submit their request, they, uh, provide some type of...
License and...
License or documentation.
When, once we, it's gonna get approved here and once...
It's already an existing daycare, uh, facility on that occasion.
I, I understand that, but we are getting requests, we are not requesting any documents. That's what I was trying to explain.
Before, before you put the request, through, yes, and this?
My question is that, is who's gonna be in charge of requesting the proper documentation? What department, one? We approving the request here, and from here, it's gonna go to a, to a department? To DPW? Okay. Once they, if, I'm assuming that after it gets approved, it's gonna go to DPW. If DPW is gonna request any documents?
The documentation has been provided already on the...
Through its, in personal service.
So, Councilor...
Yes. Uh, every request, they need to presenting the whole documentation through impressional services and also through, uh, police departments. Uh, it's not sharing for every department, because it's a confidential documentation, because it's a licensing for running our program. But every requirement is through, is impressional services. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilor.
And thank you through you, Council President. Throughout to that, they, they have to be, the license have to be up to date, and they cannot owe anything to a city. So, before this item comes to us, it, it go through a channel of making sure that they do have the business, and the business is up to date and, and with all the licenses.
And, and there is also, there is also some time constraints as well. I, I, it's an hour in the morning, in the hour in the afternoon. Help me, to my colleague who's a sponsor, is it eight to nine in the morning, three to four in the afternoon? Is that, there's, there's a set time in our ordinance. I can't find it. I'm not sure if I got it in the citizens' or whatever it's called, the munis. Anyway, but there's, I, I think those are the hours, but... Pick-up and drop-off, it's one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon, so it's not all day long and all night long?
Yes.
Yes, uh, the ordinance, what we're doing essentially is to adding, uh, addresses to the ordinance. But the ordinance is well-established when it comes to the timing. And the timing was a pick-up and drop-off time, which is basically in the morning, and a specific time, I believe it's an hour. We can double-check next meeting, and then in the, in the afternoon.
So, I went in twelve in the morning, twelve, we have, I know it's three to five, and it's either eight to ten or nine to eleven in the morning. And it specifically is for pick-up and drop-off. It's a fifteen-minute, so it, you, someone can't, like a handicap spot, someone can take that spot. With a handicap spot, someone takes that spot and uses it all day. The idea with these is it's a fifteen-minute pick-up, drop-off, so if someone starts camping out there, they can get ticketed. You'll be violating the terms of the, um, handicap limits, I mean, the daycare, childcare, thank you.
Council President.
Councilor Esposito Infante.
Thank you. I have a question for the sponsor of the ordinance. Did you, councillor, ever receive a, a draft, an art, an artwork or anything, how the signs are going to look? Are, are they going to include the specific timeframes on the actual signs? Do you know of DPW? No? Okay.
Through you, Council President, I'm sorry. And we did, and now, and one of the meetings that we had in ordinance, we actually sent correspondence to, to DPW, who sent, sent us a draft. Uh, I remember that. I don't know if, Ms. Cheff, you remember that. So, we haven't received anything from there. They should have at least a draft, even if the signs are not done, so we have an idea of how they're gonna look like. So, if we can also send our correspondence to them again, to get an update, 'cause we, we did send, uh, correspondence to get some type of a draft when it comes to those signs.
Uh, thank you for bringing that up. The good thing about the signs is that they're working with a vendor that is, it's, it's, it's something that I'm pretty sure that they can adapt when it comes to timing, because it's a very, it's a consistent ordinance with a specific time, and, and it's for specific purposes. So, maybe what we can do is send correspondence to the DPW director, so they can send us some type of, uh, draft and documentation or design as to how they're going to proceed uh, with these specific child cares, uh, parking, uh, parking spaces. Uh, yeah, we can actually entertain that as a motion to send correspondence.
So, move.
There is a motion on the table, properly second. Discussion on the correspondence. Correspondence is around, uh, sending, get, they can, they should send a draft when it comes to the design, uh, to look at the timing and how that those, uh, signs are gonna look like, uh, proceeding with this specific sign that we, that we are approving today. Uh, there is prob, uh, the motion has been second. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ice habit. The ayes have it. Now, we're going back to item 375-24. Any questions on this? All right, I'll call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye. Any names? The ayes have it. Item 377-24, childcare parking for 205 Fairview Street. There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 380-24, childcare parking at 7 Lennox Street.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. Item 420-24, childcare parking for 159 High Street. There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. Item 421-24, childcare parking for 46 Bennington Street.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 430-24, childcare parking for 140 East Haver Street.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 438-24, childcare parking for 215 Prosper Street.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now, we're going to handicap parking. Madam Clerk, please read the notice for item 524-24, handicap parking on 42 Andover Street. Item 1725, handicap parking on 327 Prosper Street. Item 3225, handicap parking on 33 Bruce, Bruce Street. Item 3325, handicap parking for 19 Exchange Street. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following subparagraphs to Section 10.36.340 of the Municipal Code Handicap Parking in the proper alphabetical order. Document number 524-24, Andover Street, north side, from 1.65 feet west of Shoshine Road to 1.85 feet west of Shoshine Road. Document number 17-25, Prospect Street, east side, from 1.25 feet south of Bohem Street to 1.... I should say 45... It does say 45 Street. 45 feet south of Bohem Street. Bruce Street, west side, from 1.85 feet southwest of Avon Street to 1.105 feet southwest of Avon Street. And Exchange... Document number 33-25, Exchange Street, east side, from 1.85 feet south of Myrtle Street to 1.105 feet south of Myrtle Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Councillors, what's the motion for item 524-24?
Motion to approve.
Handicap parking on 42 Andover Street. It's been... It's a motion on the table, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 1725, handicap parking at 327 Prosper Street.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve. Can I hear a second? Properly second, discussion.
Discussion.
Councillor Santiago.
Yes, Father. I'd like to say the handicap parking, it is in the corner, Prospect with Bohem Street, and the resident required the handicap they needed for the Bohem Street. This is the side they needed. They used the driver in the Bohem, the Bohem Street.
So, did the police recommend it on that location?
Yes.
So, it's on the specific location as the resident wanted?
Yes.
Okay, that's good then. All right, any other questions? All right, I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 3225, handicap parking at 33 Bruce Street.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 3325, handicap parking at 19 Exchange Street.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now, Madam Clerk, please read the notice for item 565-24, 15-minute parking from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at 292-294 Lawrence Street. Item 587-24, stop sign at Jefferson and Monverno Street. Item 0825, no parking anytime, Brumfield Street, between Kenneth to Lenox Side.
I'm sorry.
Between Kenneth Street to Lenox Street.
Each one of these is a separate item, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
That's why the circle is not...
All right, gotcha. So, excuse me, councillors, we're just gonna do one at a time, which is item 565-24, which is 15-minute parking, and from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., 292 to 294 Lawrence Street. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following subparagraph in the proper alphabetical order to Section 10.36.260 of the Municipal Code, 15-minute parking. Lawrence Street, west side, from 1.20 feet southeast of Stern's Ave to 1.40 feet southeast of Stern's Ave, between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Councillors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. All right, just a quick question on the proponent, Councillor Levy. Is that area, is the meter area?
I don't see it. No, sorry.
On Lawrence Street?
No, Stern Street, no. Not up there. Lawrence Street...
The meter is on Lawrence Street, I just... From Park Street to like two blocks, and then after the gas station, there's no meters. I just wanna make sure before... There's no meters up there. So, it's a 15-minute parking from 292 to 294 Lawrence Street. Councillor Levy, the hours is look a little odd. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., 12 hours.
But, yeah, if I'm the only one where the people can park for 15 minutes, there is a... It's like a... David's problem, you know?
Can we take a recess? I need a recess.
Hi. Councillors, a motion to take a recess, as per request of the clerk. Properly second, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We'll be back in a few minutes.
Motion to get out of recess.
Motion to.
There's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. No, to resume from recess. Not to, okay. To resume from recess, there is a motion on the table, properly second discussion. I hear none. Allison Field, please say aye.
Aye.
We're going back to the top of the agenda and now we are on item five six, five eighty-seven, twenty-four, stop sign at Jefferson Street and Mount Vernon Street. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding to section ten point twenty-eight point one hundred A of the municipal code, stop signs and flashing red signals, the following paragraph in the proper alphabetical order, Jefferson Street, southbound drivers on Jefferson Street at Mount Vernon Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
The public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Councillors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve and waive the thirty days.
There's a motion to approve and waive the thirty days. Properly, there's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. Madam Vice President, this, this stop sign is gonna be at Jefferson Street only or as a four-way stop sign?
So it's a, it's a, it's a T-stop, so yes, at Jefferson Street, yeah.
So no, nothing is stopping Mount Vernon?
No.
All right. Thank you for the clarifications. Any questions? I hear none. Allison Field, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item O eight twenty-five, no parking anytime on Bronfield Street between Kenneth Street to Lennox Street, both sides. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
The purpose of the hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following sub-paragraphs in the proper alphabetical order to section ten point three-six point zero-one-zero of the municipal code, parking prohibited on certain streets. Brookfield Street, both sides between Kenneth Street and Lennox Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Councillors, I mean, a public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? I hear none. Public hearing is now closed. What's the motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, properly second discussion. I hear none. Allison Field, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now we're going to item thirty-seven twenty-five, the proposed ordinance two fifty-six one sixty, clinicians. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
This is a long one, so if anyone needs to go do something else. The purpose of the hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following, section two point five-six point one-five-zero of the municipal code, clinician in its entirety. Two point five-six point one-five-zero, clinician. Job summary. Lawrence Police Department is seeking a clinic, clinician for their CIT Mobile Outreach Team. The clinician will serve as a primary clinical leader on an interdisciplinary team focused on providing evidence-based practice on community outreach team. The clinician will be full-time employee of the grant contracted community partner and will report directly to the project manager and organizational supervisory provisions. The Lawrence Police Clinician will be expected to respond in real time to provide an assessment and implementation and intervention. In addition, the person in this role would be expected to carry a small caseload and facilitate groups. The clinician will be, will prepare, develop, and implement assessments and ensure record keeping and documentation in accordance with the internal and external requirements. Essential functions. One, provide a combination of program oversight, staff supervision, and direct services provisions for clients. Two, accompany first responder officers to nine-one-one calls. Three, participate in ride-along with Lawrence Police Officers. Four, conduct initial screening onsite and serve as a primary liaison to law enforcement on assigned shifts. Five, perform and document participant screenings, psychological assessments, progress and referral information. Six, conduct clinical intake assessments on participants and family members as needed. Seven, collaborate and coordinate with interdisciplinary team to provide the best care for participants. Eight, attend weekly clinical supervision and administrative meetings. Nine. Nine, meet regularly with clinical team to staff caseloads and keep abreast of current issues. Ten, work with leadership to establish training and develop plan for CIT team. Eleven, represent the program in a prepared and professional manner at a community events, task force, and public speaking engagements. Twelve, maintain linkage with law enforcement and community agencies by providing documented case consultation, program development, and problem solving. Thirteen, provide information and referral services to individuals and families. Fourteen, maintain necessary documentation, data entry, and records in accordance with the program and grant requirements. Fifteen, participate in cross-training of law enforcement and CIT teams. Sixteen, prepare and facilitate monthly operations meetings with the police department. Seventeen, attend and actively participate in supervision and staff meetings. Eighteen, always maintain, always remain alert through the scheduled shift. Nineteen, perform all duties in accordance with the agency's policies and procedures. And twenty, maintain confidentiality of the records in accordance with HIPAA and other federal, state, and county guidelines. Please note, the essential functions listed in this section are not limited only to the tasks listed and may include other duties as assigned. Qualities, clinical skills is required for conducting brief and targeted assessments to provide interventions, health behavior change, substance use treatments, and triage for appropriate level care. Knowledge and passion for evidence-based treatment and targeted, time-limited interventions. Ability to establish and maintain effective work relationships, ability to effectively on multiple tasks and maintain well-organized work environment. Ability to maintain confidentiality, ability to effectively, as part of a team and, to work effectively as part of a team and independently. Capacity for flexibility and adaptability in different work situations. Ability to work well with diverse populations, experience, training, and developing staff. Strong consultative abilities, conflict resolution skills, and leadership abilities. Qualifications, master's level, clinician, L-I-S-C-W-M-S-W or LMHC, must have specialization in comorbidity diagnosis, trauma-informed approach, and experience working with culturally diverse population. At least three years of experience with adults, families, and persons involved with the criminal justice system. Superior written and verbal communication skills, ability to speak and write Spanish preferred. Accomplished documentation skills with meticulous attention to detail, proficient in Microsoft Office Suite, exemplary professional ethics, ability to safeguard confidential information, possess good judgment skills with the ability to interpret information and protocol requirements, initiate appropriate actions. Must have working knowledge of the current versions of DSMV and ACM criteria. Must have a valid driver's license and access to reliable auto. To the extent that there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Motion, Councillors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, properly second discussion. I hear, I hear none. Allison Field, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item seventy-three twenty-five, an act to deter illegal parking during this, there's no emergencies. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding to section ten point zero-eight point zero-three-zero of the municipal code, temporary parking prohibition, snow removal, the following sub-paragraph in the proper alphabetical order, sub-D, fines. Fines for illegal parking, illegally parked cars shall be fifty dollars in addition to any storage and tow fees. This fee shall be reviewed by the City Council at least once every five years after enactment. To the extent that there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Councillor, now, public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Councilor LaPlante.
Thank you. On behalf of a constituent of mine who wasn't able to be here this evening, he asked if I could read his letter into the record. It's from Louis Robles of one eighty-three Abbott Street. Dear Councillors, I'm writing to express my support for an act to deter illegal parking during snow emergencies. During recent snow emergencies, I observed that numerous vehicles remained parked illegally, often due to tow companies having limited time, coordination challenges, and the shortage of tow companies, or adverse road conditions. I support a two-tier fine system, a fifty-dollar fine for vehicles that are towed and a two-hundred-dollar fine for vehicles that, for whatever reason, do not get towed. To ensure fairness, if a vehicle ultimately gets towed, the owner should be allowed to present a receipt from the tow company at City Hall to have the higher fine reduced to the standard of fifty dollars. The approach not only protects our residents, our residents from excessive penalties, but also measures, reassures trafficking, ticketing officials that fines are administered equitably, which reduces the uncertainty or doubts of handling our, out the higher fine. Additionally, I would like to address two further considerations. Medical emergencies. Should an individual be exempt from fines if they can provide proof that a medical emergency prevented them from moving their vehicle during a snow emergency? While such cases may be rare, it is important to ensure fairness and enforcement. The city could consider removing the fine, not the charge from the tow company, though. And enforcement incentives. I've also noticed, noticed occasions when illegally parked vehicles do not receive tickets. Would it be reasonable to allocate a portion of the fines to the police department to bolster police resources? Although some may argue that incentivizing enforcement could lead to abuse, directing funds toward enhancing police resources, not a pay incentive, could improve consistency in enforcement. Thank you for your attention to these matters. I appreciate your consideration of these suggestions to better serve our community during snow emergencies. Sincerely, Louis Robles, one eighty-three Abbott Street in Lawrence.
Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? I hear none. At this time, public hearing is closed. Councillors, what's the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
There is a motion to adopt. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion.
I also would be a part of that motion to amend the act, same part of that, to say no later than every five years, as we discussed at the meeting two weeks ago.
On the public hearing, it says at least once every five years.
There's no less than, we changed the language.
We changed, yeah. There is a motion to, to adopt, properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Councillor Wilson, you, you, you work.
Thank you, Council President. And how much is the, how much do they charge now for illegal parking?
Twenty-five dollars.
It looks like I don't park illegally. I have a driveway. Okay, so I ask just from my own knowledge and for the people that are watching, as you know, Council President, in my colleagues, we have an issue with parking in the city. It's, it's all over the city, and I'm gonna refer to my district. And we are adding more money, we're adding twenty-five more dollars to the twenty-five that we already have. And we're not giving the community any solution for parking, not even like before. I think I may be wrong on that, but correct me if I'm wrong. Before, we used to have places available for overnight parking, especially during wow, emergency. I believe that is not, that is not available now. I believe so. I believe that. But we are asking, we are giving, we are adding more money and we're not giving the community a solution to a problem that we basically created as, as a city. So I don't think approving this tonight will bring any solution to what we already have. I think that the city needs, the administration needs to hire a traffic specialist, and they need to look into the issues that we have now. There's no parking, on District B, there's no parking available. And I don't think giving, charging them more on top of the money that they already have to pay when the car gets removed, and I believe it's two hundred dollars or around there. Two hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars for a family that is struggling with their weekly bills, it's a lot of money. So before taking this in consideration, please take in consideration the families already have an issue paying the twenty-five dollars, and plus, we're not giving them any solutions on parking. We created a, a problem as a, as a city without, we didn't, didn't take any consideration on parking. There's a lot of people moving in, many, many cars, and the city is getting money for, for the, for the cars that we have in the city, but we're not giving them any solution. So I don't think approving this tonight will bring any solution to the problem that we're already facing. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Just, just as a point of, of information of, that you mentioned that before used to be, before used to be parking allowed in some schools, that's what you refer? Yeah, that's, that's still the case. So just for the public up there that are listening, all-night parking during the snow, snow emergency allow, locations are as follow. Arlington School on Arlington Street, the Weatherby School, the Stodo Park, High Street side only from Pleasant Street to South East Street to Stodo Terrence. Exeter Bridge School, the yard only. Interior of Lelehi School, which is in construction right now. Exeter on Rodding School, Pat, Pat Street only. James Leonard School, the playground's outside, and the Parthen around the playground east to, to East Hebra Street. Those are the locations.
If I may, Council President, the, the school that you mentioned, I think there's only one in District B, the Lehe, which is in construction. So, and there's another side that, that near Garden Street, if I'm not, I think it's Garden, not Garden, it's the other. What's the name of the street that we always get a lot of calls?
Yeah, there's some.
Summer, no, Summer Street.
Summer and Garden.
Summer Street. They were not able, residents from there were not able to park in a facility that is near, because according to them, the DPW is not allowing parking in that area. So I don't know, thank you for mentioning, the schools are available in other sector of the city, but District B doesn't have space for parking. So it's either park whenever you can, where, in any place that you can find, or, or get the ticket on your car remove.
Councilor Rosario. Thank you, through you, and, and we here sometimes would disagree. I believe that, believe it or not, that twenty-five dollars, it's, it's way too low for what we went through in this winter. Twenty-five dollar ticket, it's, it's way too low. People just left the car, I mean, the operation, now we're talking about emergency. Imagine that it was a fire or something and people are not removing the vehicles because of snow. I heard people, myself, saying, I'll leave it at this, twenty-five dollars. Without knowing how much it costs to clean the streets, DPW is out there trying to clean, and they cannot clean the street, and we being hit by, by also our constituents that say that city's not clean, that we're not doing the job. And I have an offer to make. I believe that we might not be able to combine the extra fine of fifty dollars with the towing. I, I, I think that, that's, that's believable. I, what I, what I suggest is the, the fine should be a hundred dollars if you don't move your vehicle, and we'll stay in twenty-five dollars if your car is towed. I think we should go that way, and, and whoever, I mean, it's, this year, believe it or not, I believe, I feel that we advertised it enough. It went out there to remove the vehicles, in my district, part of my district, the neighbors went out knocking on doors to have the people alternate the vehicles, and people did not pay attention. It's twenty-five dollars. So I believe that we should go, if you don't, it's, it's an ordinance, and it's only on the wintertime. So it's only on the wintertime, and it's only when, when the emergency happens. So it's not, it's not like it used to be, they used to alternate for three or four months, every day regardless if it's snow or not. Now you only alternate when there's an emergency. What happened this year, it could happen next year, and more vehicles would. and more vehicles will be on the street, like you said, Councilor Luzon, and it will be worse. We're lucky that we don't have a chaos or an emergency while the snow is out and people are not removing the vehicles. There's community parking. There's community parking everywhere. Also, I heard people that we refer to the community parking, they're not going to walk as far as that, and I'm going to leave my car there. So for those people that are not complying with the ordinance, we need to have those cars alternate. If they not alternate, they violate the ordinance, and they need to be penalized unfortunately. So what I recommend for the proposal of this ordinance is the fine should be $100 if you don't remove your car. And if your car gets towed, you keep it at 25 plus the cost of the towing. That's a proposal that I have for you on the table, proponent, Mr. Councilor La Plante. If you feel that that's fair. People out there are asking for more. I believe that $50 is not enough. $25 is too low. I mean, but if you get your car towed, you pay the towing company, whatever they charge you, and you're still paid $25. If you don't remove your vehicle, it should be at least $100 for you to pay.
So, Councilor De Rosario, you are taking yeah, Councilor Santiago, wait a moment. What you're saying is that the fine should be into two tiers. Tier one, $25 if your car get towed. And tier two, $100 if your car didn't get towed but you parked during the emergency, during the snow emergency. You pay $100 straight to the City of Lawrence if your car didn't get towed during the snow emergency.
That's correct, Council President.
Tier one and tier two.
And that's a proposal for the proponent to think.
That's a friendly amendment?
It is a friendly amendment, if you accept.
Councilor La Plante, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I accept half of it only because I think the other half of it wouldn't be in order because it deals with the towing. And this is dealing specifically just with the illegal parking, not with the towing portion. I don't think that what the council is suggesting is a bad idea. I think there needs to be a standalone item for the towing section. My section deals with 10.08. The section he's talking about is 10.32. The two different sections. So when we had a public hearing, it did not consider the 10.32. The only thing we talked about is 10.08. So I would accept half of that. I would accept as a friendly amendment, the $100. We'll see if that flies. But I will not accept the second part of that, which is the towing section.
So right now, the current ordinance that you're changing is a new ordinance, I'm assuming. That's what you're saying? So you're changing the 25 to 100?
Well, with the amendment, it's 25 to 100. It's 10.08.30 is currently an ordinance. And so what my colleague from District C is trying to amend, which I will accept, is that currently it's 25. My proposal has 50. He wants to go to 100. If the body, I don't, there's no magic number between 50 and 100 to me. If this body wishes to go with 100, I'm fine with that. If that's too rich for the blood, we may, you know. Well, here's what I would like to do, councillor, if it's all right. I'm not going to accept the vote because I'm thinking a little bit out loud. I will, if you offered it as an amendment, I would like to see what the appetite of the committee, of the council is. And if people want for 100, that's great. If not, at least I don't lose the vote on the 50.
So what you, what you You can have that as an independent amendment, and if it passes, it will overrule the $50.
You go with that.
All right. Are you making that as a motion?
Yes.
Amendment for 100?
It's an independent motion for 100.
Yep.
Yeah, there is a motion to be 100. It's properly second now that that motion is in order. It will be, the discussion will be around the 100 first. And then the vote that will be taken is under the 100, and then subsequently, independently of what happened, we'll continue the discussion.
Council President, I do think some of our colleagues may not fully understand that.
All right. So what we have in front of us is an ordinance that proposed $50 for snow emergency parking tickets. The current motion we have is to approve that $50. There was another motion on top of that motion that is in order to change the 50 to 100. And that will, the discussion will be around the 100. The first vote that we take will be around the $100 because that motion is in order. And then we are going to open that around the $100 for discussions. Any discussion in the $100 motion that we have.
Just so we're clear. Currently, right now, I mean, this is super to understand. Thank you, Council President. Right now, the ordinance is $25. My proposal says 50. It's been amended by my colleagues, hard to point, by my colleague, which I've seconded, to 100. If the 100 passes, it should pass for the whole thing. If the 100 doesn't pass, it returns back to the 50.
Yes. That's how it is. Yes. So essentially, we are talking only for the alternate parking on locations where it's allowed. And the priority of the city at that moment during the emergency matter when it comes to the snow is to clean up the road. Not during the summer. The summer is $25. Not during fall. That's $25 unless it's the snow. And not during spring unless it's the snow. And then it will be 25. The whole year round will be 25. It's set for time where the mayor called for an emergency snow. It's not emergency. Throughout the City of Lawrence. And then when that happened, that $150 or $25 will get cut only during that time. And that's actually to enforce the alternative parking to ensure that people park on the proper side. I mean, I believe that a lot of councillors went around with DPW and see the issue. So the issue and the difficulties of the situation when it comes to cleaning. So councillors, the motion right now is to approve $100. Discussion around this, around the 100.
Council President.
Council Luzon.
And I'm going to mention this again. I think we should not be raising, adding more money to the $25, to the $50. We, as councillors, as a city, should provide a solution. It may be perhaps more communication. My constituents, they didn't receive the proper information. They sent us samples, and I think you are aware of that, Council President, from other cities, the way they do things in other cities. And our city did not send out. There was a lack of communication. And I understand my colleagues' concern about the money that we are spending as a city and dealing with the situation and not being able to clean the city when we have snowstorms. But I also understand that for some of the families that I represent, this is going to be a financial challenge. And maybe $100 for some of us is, well, not for me. $100 is still $100. And for the families that I represent, it's going to be a financial challenge. I think the solution for this is opening a line of better communication between DPW and the community. And I'm going to use the City of Metu when as an example. They post the streets are going to be cleaned ahead of the cleaning. And people are aware, and I don't know how they do it, but it's working over there. Hopefully, we can learn from other cities. But $100, $1,000, $500 is not going to make a change. We already have an issue with parking in the city. And I don't think changing an ordinance is going to be the solution. Thank you, Council President. Also, if I may, Council President, can I ask a question to the councillor that is proposing this?
Of course. You have the floor.
Do you have an issue in your district with this? Because most of your district, do they have driveways? Because in my district, it's not, it's not that. Not everybody has.
You just told the council president, so it is not.
Oh, Council President. I want to know. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I would like to know if the councillor proposing this has an issue as we have in District B. And I don't know if District C has the same situation. But in District B, it's an issue. It's an issue.
Right. Councilor La Plante?
Sure. So this is a citywide issue. My district is impacted is impacted by that as well. We have density issues in our, in the part that I represent. Part of my city, part of my district has driveways. Part of it doesn't. So I run across the entire spectrum. But this right here, you know, this, the reason why I'd answer my colleague's greater point was when I had a chance to meet up and have a post-mortem with DPW after the snow, you know, one of the things that became apparent and frustrating is that the idea behind a fine is not to enrich the city. It's not to make money. The idea behind the fine is to deter behavior. It's to change behaviors. And we've heard from other colleagues here that 25 wasn't going to do it. Park there anyways, the cost of doing business. But maybe 50, I thought 50, but maybe for 100. The idea here is you're trying to change the behaviors. Are we going to fix everything? The answer is no. Is there still going to be problems in the next storm? 100%. You bet there's going to be issues. But if we can at least, after talking to DPW, telling me that they ticketed and the cars came back and there was no changes, we have to change that behavior, and it's not going to fix everything. And that's the point. And the reality is here that the bigger point, the much bigger point is in an emergency. The reason why we have this parking situation is because we need first responders to get through in the times that we need them, whether it's police, whether it's fire, whether it's an ambulance. And if cars are so narrow and we're not going to be able to get it through, that's a problem. And I'm not. And I don't disagree with my colleague from District B's her comments regarding the housing spike that we're facing. I've been on the forefront of that argument now for several years now. I concur. I talk about it. Cease it, the year. You're sick of hearing me talk about it because we just keep adding and adding and adding. And what are we doing? We're not dealing with the fundamental problem. So I hope that answers your point. The points that are in here are well taken. But I'm hopeful that if it's not 100, if it's 50, that we change the behaviors like we need to.
Yep.
Council President.
Thank you, Councilor La Plante. Before we go back to you, Councilor Luzon, I would like to see if there is any other councillors before we continue. So we have Councilor Reyes. We have Councilor Vice President Infante. And then we go to the first, Councilor Mamo, Councilor Santiago. Councilor Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Follow the question. It's not an issue in a specific area. We have the same issue. It's a citywide. But through the to the emergency, we receive a lot of phone call. It's not only from a specific district. The whole district has the same concern. We need to go door by door to knock and asking to the resident to move the car, to allow, to clean this area. It's not easy. DPW do a lot of announcement. Was through the webpage. We use social media. We do a lot of things to inform our community. And also, we have the blue light and somebody called paper light, too. It doesn't matter what color they see, but the light is there. They're supposed to follow the rule. So I think we need to do some action to prepare for next year because was terrible last year through the beginning.
So thank you, Councilor Reyes. And let's put this in perspective. Why we have alternative parking? We have alternative parking because the City of Lawrence need to clean the snow. When we have cars on both sides, what ended up happening is that DPW just go in the middle. They come back the following night to clean up one other side, but both of those sides still with cars. And sometime, behavior of people don't want to go to another street or so far so on. That's what actually it's happening a lot of the time. Not all the time. Sometime, as Councilor Luzon have brought up, there is parking issues that we need to take a look into that as well when it comes to the amount of the street that are allowable to park on specific areas. So that's the whole situation here. Councilor, Councilor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. After the last snowstorm that the city had, the next afternoon, I went on a drive with DPW Director Jorge Hyman. We drove through 90% of District E. The 10% that we did not drive through was because even his simple SUV could not get through because of double parking and lack of snow removal. And it was a point to me because, you know, I was one of those councillors trying to be like, hey, what are we doing here? You know, you know how I could get sometimes. And he's like, councillor, I need you to see what's going on. So we did do that. A second point that I want to make. I am, this councillor is going to support the $100 increase for the simple fact that we keep making excuses about families. And some families, my colleague is correct, cannot afford the $100. But majority of our families, our community, have been living here for many years. They know the rules. They know what they're supposed to be doing. Then they come to us and say the opposite. Or they come to us and act a certain way. And at some point, we need to put our foot down. This works out in other communities because the communities enforces their laws. We have not been doing a great job of that. And it's time that we do that. It's time that we hold people accountable. And hopefully, we can see an improvement in the future.
Through you, Council President. I'm also going to be supportive of the higher fine. I think it's long overdue. I think this past winter was proof of the fact that, like our vice president mentioned, we don't often enforce the rules that we currently have in place. And as a result, we are left with a mess. And I understand Counsel Luzon's wanting to advocate because I'm a big believer of advocating for our folks and wanting to be supportive and encouraging our purpose to educate our residents. But I think there needs to be a fine line as to at what point do you feel like you're coddling them? At what point do you think you're just enabling bad behavior? And I think we've hit that point. So I agree with Counsel La Plante in terms of this is to shift our residents' behavior. Counselor in District D, Doyle Street, for example, there's no parking on either side of that street. And I don't say anything because I know that there's limited capacity for parking in other, you know, on Water Street and like the surrounding streets. So I don't really say anything. I don't call the chief to say, hey, ticket these people. And, you know, they park on a street where there's no parking on either side. And when this winter came, it was atrocious. And when this winter came, it was atrocious. It was disgusting. And then it got super cold, super icy. So then it was horrible to even clean up afterwards. So with that being said, I, I'm going to be supportive of the amendment. I'm just curious as to if this does go through, what, what would be the plan of action or how does it affect that, that, you know, are we going to move forward if possible with that tiered, you know, that tiered fine? Cause that seemed appealing.
Just, just to clarify from that, as Councillor, Councillor LaPlante would say, that's another ordinance. What we're going to do if any of those, those situations happen, and then what we should do, look into the other ordinance so we can change it and maintain the, the fine or add the fine when it comes to that specific situation. So before I get to you, Councillor De Rosario, we're going to Councillor Santiago and then we go to the second round.
We are doing this amendment to help the resident for our community. But we also think about really, the, the situation is here about the problem and the parking, the, the parking problem we have every year, just now in winter. And we, I propose this item because the constituent, we, we need to, we need to, to put it there, to put it out in order, our constituent and the city to make improve. But we didn't, we, we are voting for that, but we didn't do any meeting with the constituent. We didn't, eh, eh, we didn't do a, eh, eh, any, anything with them because that's the, you, we suppose they have the issues. We live here, eh, but we don't know, we don't, don't do anything for them. What we can do, eh, what, what we are, eh, what we are giving to them, just we are taking the money, we are doing ticket, we are doing, but what they can receive back. And right now we are saying 50 or 100, but when the car is towing, the company have 160 or 150 plus that the, just the city, we have the 25 now. And we have to thinking about the constituent. Some people said eh, the behavior, but it's not the behavior, it's the issue we, we have it. They don't have parking. And, and, and just not in the winter season. It isn't all season. And that's the propose for winter. But we have to, to consider it to bring some solution for the constituent. We have to, to, eh, to, to make a study, eh, to, to looking especially the traffic. It is horrible because we got more than, the, more people than the, eh, more car than that we have supposed. And the population is increased eh, so fast.
Thank you, Councillor Santiago. I understand the, the, the issue when it comes to traffic. I think that instead of having some type of positions that we've been creating, we should create a traffic, a traffic engineer position instead. Councillor De Rosario.
Thank you, through you. Once again, all the cities implement harder ordinance. In Metuhen, you cannot park, you cannot alternate parking. But if you haven't drive with the DPW, we went out overnight and near Metuhen and the Lawrence line, they, Lawrence line in Metuhen, you know how, why it works? Cause the Metuhen people park on the outside and they got towed and they got ticketed. Right? And Lowell, and Lowell, you cannot, from 6:00 PM to the other day, and they have, and they have public parking where you can park, but you had to move your vehicle the next day at 6:00 PM, 6:00 AM. From 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, there's no cars allowed on the streets. We allowing our constituents to park, alternate parking. And we also offer community parking and they don't want to take the offer. Once again, an emergency. They don't, there was cars parked on our streets for days, days. And every day they got a $25 ticket. They would have left it there for a week if they wouldn't got towed. There was cars that were towed with four and five tickets and they got towed. So I think behavior changing, yeah. And, and we have to do our part. Our city councillors, we have to do our part. We're going to change the ordinance now if we do, right? We got to go out there and, and, and educate our constituents and bring this out and say, you know what? We have so many months for the winter time to come and this is going to take effect on the winter time. So get prepared, be prepared, you know, eh, eh, respect the ordinance and this is how it is. You got to move it when the lights is on. We have, we have all this month before the winter comes in. We're going into the summer. So this is the time to do any changes for the winter's procedures. Yeah, do we need to ask the, the, the administration to implement something? Yeah. But also we're going to be out there campaigning, some of us. So bring that word out, tell them that this, if this change, this is going to change and you need to comply with the ordinance. If not, you're going to be tagged with a $100 ticket. So we also need to do our part. Like I said, in our neighborhood, in my neighborhood, some people got together and they were knocking on doors to have the neighbors move the vehicles. Cause they wanted the street cleaned and they wanted to prevent their neighbors to get towed or taken. Are we going to be doing that for years? Councillor Vice President said this one thing that I agreed. We've been, some of us been here for the longest and we still don't comply with, with. A few years back, you used to alternate for three months on an everyday basis. Now you only alternate on emergencies. Yeah, the citizen grow, eh, eh, more cars, but now you only do it on emergencies. Imagine, imagine if we, all this grow and all this vehicle, you have to do it every day. So with that said, I think we should implement, this is the only way we can change behavior and we got to bring that word out, the things that are going to change for the winter.
Thank you so much, Council Luzon.
Thank you, Council President. And I, all my colleagues have good points. To disagree with most of them, unfortunately. I was not elected to work on changing behaviors. I was not elected for that. I was elected to represent District B and to make sure that the departments of the city work eh, in a way that helps the community. DPW, yes, they are, they, they're doing a good job, but unfortunately, communication is not working in the way it's supposed to work. Not all the resident have access to eh, social media. You have different group of people getting information from different sources. Eh, and I mentioned Metuhen and the way they provide the streets. They do that every, every time it's needed, they do it. And yes, Metuhen is a different city, we know, but we can learn from them. DPW can learn from them. Why some of the neighbors in my district were telling other neighbors to move the, the cars? Because they list, a list of the street was sent out unofficially from DPW. And maybe got to some of you and maybe you distribute that. Yes, it got to me and I distributed the list. I send it to different sites. That's why some of my constituents gather information. Not because they saw it on their social media, DPW's social media page. So we are asking, we are increasing a fine without giving the community the tools. Yes, we have a problem with parking. And this may not bring any change. But I think instead of us changing, concentrating on changing the behavior of a community, because we were not elected for that. We were elected to make sure that the department of the city of Lawrence working a way eh, to help the residents. Thus, we were elected to do that. So I will not be wanting in favor of this, because I believe the issue that we face with parking, it has to do with a bad, um, with a department that has not been proactive. Okay? We have to find solutions. And, and the president, I, I know the president is an engineer, he may know more than I do about traffic and all that. We have not provide the city, the community with a plan for parking. We are reacting. We're not being proactive. So parking, the issues with parking are not going to go away because you charge $100, $250. Cause you are not here, you're not going to change the behavior on nobody. I think we need to focus on communication and making sure that the DPW and any other department that is involved with parking provides the community with a plan. That's what I think. Unfortunately, and I know and I understand, some of you have been here for longer than I, than, than me, but I've also been here as a part of other administration and I've seen the problem. And every time, and, and I'm going to say this, this community keeps changing and we need to find a way to communicate with the new residents. The people that are here are not the same people that were here two years ago. This is a gay city. You may change, if you think you will do, the behavior or of the people that are living now, but that's going to go back to what it is. What we need to put the energies to make sure that the department works in a way that is providing what the city needs. We have an issue with parking and it needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed. So I'm not voting in favor of that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Luzon. Council Los Reyes.
No, 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 Council Los Reyes.
Through you. I want to be very respectful with my colleague, Council Luzon, but the most concern I have in winter time was from Gardin, Osha, Somer, Trenton, East Hero, Jason Tera. I'm working with this specific community, with my constituent, because they called me and they say the car is not moving in both side. They, they probably cannot get in because it cannot, they don't have space to do that. I need to go indoor, knocking indoor and asking, please move your car because we need to clean. Yeah, I spend a lot of time. I dedicate a couple hours. You're not remember because you're not there.
No, no. Council Los Reyes, you may continue.
I, I want to express because I'm working in District B for, I think, for the last 20 year during a community meeting. When they have some necessity or they have some concern, they will be. But it's not only you District, eh, for the city, what we mentioned before, but for that winter, I need to put extra effort to do in helping DPW to clean this, this kind of area in specific.
Council Mammo.
We speak as if this is like an everyday thing. How many snow emergencies?
We have like around six, seven this year.
Six, seven snow, okay. My memory was really bad because I could, I thought it was like two or three, but six, seven. And I, out of the whole winter, and this is, you know, granted, every season is going to be different, but we're talking about six, seven out of the whole winter season that we're just asking for folks to follow the rules. Just follow the rules. Yeah.
We weren't yet asking.
And he's like, God forbid.
Now it's required with a hundred.
We tend to enable certain behavior and then as a result, a councillor, eh, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to disagree to a certain extent. And I tru, trust me, I understand where you're coming from in terms of advocating for your residents. There's a good portion of, of, of folks in my district that it's the elderly. I completely agree with you. We have to address parking. Trust me, I agree with you. We have to address it. But I must say that it's like, how many folks have multiple vehicles? I'm, I'm glad that I'm seeing another item on the agenda, which is addressing school buses and transportation vehicles that are actually being parked on residential streets for days at a time. And that's also affecting the parking situation during the winter months. So I think, Ms. Luzon, with all due respect, you speak as if like, we're not in the business of curbing or changing behavior, but a, as a councillor, I think there's times where we have to make decisions that it is to the benefit of the residents without them realizing that it is for their benefit. Because at the end of the day, we're addressing public safety. It's a public safety concern.
All right. Councillors, if there is no more questions, I mean, I think that we should move forward. At this point, the, the motion that is in order is the 100, the same ordinance with the change of the 50 and now it's going to be 100. Eh, with the amendment, I mean, is that, this is a, it's a, it's a motion by itself.
Right, you meant my motion, which is mine.
Yes. It's, 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 you didn't say differently. Amendment you put as a motion in the penalty.
But we never voted on his motion.
Yes, there's a motion. So at this point, I'll call the motion for the $100.
Will we take the vote?
Councillor Santiago.
Yes, I want eh, just for the record to request eh, Consul, Consul Levy is not for the vote because when was the 100 petition, we got it issued for that.
Yeah, I understand. A councillor, councillor, let's stick to the.
She's gone.
She's, she's gone.
She's not just.
I understand. All right. I understand, Councillor Santiago. At this time, I'll call the question.
If you want to hear it on the phone, you can call. Can I connect through Zoom?
April Fool, I got you. No problem. I got to take it as an April Fool. April Fool situation.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the $100, Councillor, Councillor, let's go back. We're voting on the $100, the same act. The difference is that now it's going to be $100 instead of 50. At this time, I'll call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
No.
Any ayes?
No.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Stat with you, Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Mammo?
Yes.
Council Santiago?
No.
Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Council Luzon?
No.
Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Levy is noted as absent. Um, Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President?
I vote yes. What's the count?
Six, 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 two, one.
Six, two, one, motion carries. So the, the act went on with the $100 dollar fine.
Six, two, one. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Councillor LaPlante, you have a question?
No, so we're going to, we need to have a final vote now with that amendment, so we had to do it more time.
Yeah. So now we are going to take eh, a vote for the actual item, item 7325, which is an act to deter illegal parking during the snow emergency with the $100. So now, eh, I will call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
No.
Eh, Madam Clerk, please, please call the roll.
Council Levy is noted as absent. Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Luzon?
No.
Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Council Santiago?
No.
Council Mammo?
Yes.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President?
I vote yes. What's the count?
Six, two, one.
Six, two, one, motion carries. So we are going now to table matters. Any table matters on the agenda? I hear none. So we're going straight to new business.
Council President, I thought we were taking stuff off the table matter. Were we, did we not respond and are we, we were going to withdraw?
No, we weren't, we withdrew last, last time.
All set on it?
Yeah.
While you were absent?
No, no, no. We withdrew last time. All right, new business. We're going to the new business, item 11725, the review of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority Finance.
Council President?
Yes, Council Vice President Infante.
Um, 117 dash 25, I'd like to make a motion to request that the Chair of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority is present along with the Attorney and the Executive Director of the LRA.
All right, there is a motion to send correspondents for them to be here as a requirement. Eh, any questions? I mean, can I hear a second? Properly second discussion. I, I hear none. Madam Clerk, you have something to say?
Yeah, I apologize. The councillor was very clear, I just didn't have my pen fast enough. Inviting.
The Chair?
The Chair.
The Attorney. The Executive Director.
Executive Director.
Is this in order to amend to require our city attorney to be there?
Eh, well, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a review of the Lawrence Redevelopment Finance. So the city attorney doesn't have to be here. Probably we should have somebody that knows about that, but I mean, they don't, we don't have any specific person.
I would like just in case because I am inviting their attorney, just in case.
Yeah, you are referring to the, eh, to the ARPA fund that was sent to them, right?
Yeah, so.
That's what we have, that's what we have authority to review.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So it doesn't regard, regarding to the $2.5 million eh, money, city, city money from ARPA.
Correct.
All right.
One more question, I'm so sorry. You're taking a motion to invite them.
Yes.
You made the motion and I didn't take.
Can I get the second, I think, properly second by Council Luzon. Any questions? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye on the motion to invite. Council Luzon, give me one minute. The, I will call the questions to invite those previous person that we mentioned. All those in favor, all those in favor, please say aye. Any ayes? The ayes have it. Eh, now, item 11725, which is the review of the Lawrence Development Authority Finance, will go to the Bayonan Finance Committee. Eh, item 11825, extend the 90 days temporary appointment to Karil Garcia, eh, to Karil M. Garcia as an acting personal director. This is going to the personal committee. Item. Item 11825, resident parking on Jackson Court, ordinance committee. 12025, 15 minute parking on Holy Street, this is going to the ordinance committee. 120125, resolution ordering retire Lawrence, fire, fire Donald Balla, Laba, Lab, Balla, oh my God.
Lake Valley.
Bali. Uh, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item 12225, resolution ordering Marisol Almanz and Polanco, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item 12325, childcare, uh, parking, uh, 336 Warner Street, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item, uh, 12524, handicap parking on 443 South Broadway Street, uh, ordinance committee. Uh, 12525, no parking 550 Willow Street, ordinance committee. 12625, removal of handicap parking 108 Lexington Street, ordinance committee. 12725, resident parking, Heber Street between Junction Street to Newberry Street, uh, this is going to ordinance committee. Item 128, 12825, uh, preach the word of God, various date and locations, uh, but, yeah, we don't have the, the, uh, the days or location.
Or which one is it?
Uh, 12825.
I will make sure I have it before on the screen.
All right, this is going to the ordinance committee, uh, the proposed date and location will be add to the item. Item 12925, one year university celebration, uh, July 13, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Campania Commons, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item 13025, one boys walk and celebrate on June 21st, 2025, from 4, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM, uh, at the O'Corner Park, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item 120, 130, 125, Fiesta Show Semanispana at the Campania Commons on June 8th to June 16th, this is going to the ordinance committee. 13225, Semanispana at the Campania Commons, June, uh, 14th and June 15th, this is going to the ordinance committee. What, item 13325, stop sign across Union Street, uh, ordinance committee. Item 13425, relocation, relocate one SO pole on Ambeville Street, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item 13525, relocate two J.O. poles on Ambeville Street, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item 13625, handicap parking for 9, uh, Bradford Street, ordinance committee. Item 13725, ordinance proposed to prohibit the school buses from parking on resident streets, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item 13825, authorization to spend $54,932.70 from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Funds, uh, this is going to the Bayon Finanz Committee. Item 13925, uh, recognize Lawrence High School Theater Program, this is going to the ordinance committee. As a resolution, uh, resolution to recognize the Lawrence High School Theater Program. Item 14025, resolution, uh, to recognize Lawrence High School, uh, varsity wrestler, Hillary McDonough, um, as a second, uh, second, second year in a row to be a state champion, this is going to the ordinance committee. Councilors, now we're going to, uh, dates for the committee schedules. Councilor, there is an emergency that happened on this receipt, and when it, it was a fire that hap, the fire that happened last weekend? Two weeks ago?
That's a fire that happened actually three years ago, and they rebuilt the business, and they reopened the business, and now they need, after they built the whole thing, they, they need to remove the 15 minute parkings and put it on the other side, and that's what they're trying to get. The business is up and running, it's a, it's a convenience store, well, they made it like a supermarket, so they requesting that 15 minutes on the other side of the street, so we're trying to put it as an emergency.
Okay, so essentially, we have an ordinance for this, for this sign.
Yeah, there is an ordinance.
We're just gonna change the, the location.
There's an ordinance located at 333, uh, Long Street, that was, I don't know if you guys remember, three years ago, there was a fire in that store, and also the apartment buildings that was there, they rebuilt the whole store, stayed at our store, you guys will be invited to reopening, it's already running, but they need the 15 minutes parking so, so they can have the business going.
All right, a different location, I guess, right?
Yes.
All right, councilors, uh, there is a, a request to suspend the rules to add an item, uh, to the agenda, and subsequently send to committee. We will do that first. Um, councilors, can I get a motion to suspend the rules to add an emergency item, um, to be able to send that, this to committee?
So move.
Second.
And what is the emergency?
We, we'll, we'll get to that point in a second. There is a motion on the table to add an item to the agenda, by suspending the rules, and there is a second discussion.
Discussion, so I just, I'm gonna ask the question, because it's gonna impact my vote on whether I wanna put this in there. I, I, I wanna see this go through, don't get me wrong, it's not my district, and if you think it's important, that's fine, and I'll probably, and at the end of the day, I'll probably end up supporting it, but I, I don't see why this is, we have to suspend the rules tonight.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll respond to that question. As per the chat, there is a couple of, uh, things that can be considered as an emergency. One of them is for the convenience of the public. As Councilor Del Rosario state, it's a convenience to that business and to the public around that area, since it's a relocation of the current signs that they don't have, because due to the fire that it was done three years ago. It's for the convenience of the public.
I understand, and, 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 and we use that, we use it all the time, because oftentimes there's really not an emergency. You want an emergency? Merrimack Valley gas crisis, that was an emergency. We had to change all kinds of things, that was truly an emergency, that was the big one, right? That's the gold standard of emergencies, I'm sure there's other stuff as well. Everything we do is for the, everything, all the votes we did, the handicap parking, the childcare, everything was for the convenience of the public. Why not do everything as an emergency? Because everything is for the convenience of the public, so, and I, and no offense on that, I just, I just have a fundamental issue, and I've been consistent about it, and I'm not gonna change my consistency this evening, as much as I respect my colleagues from District C.
I learned that trick from you one, one before, so, so, eh, Councilor Santiago?
I.
I define the emergency.
Yes, it, it, it feels like you did the description.
That's what is in the chat.
Exactly. But when, when I said the item and I said emergency, and I said, oh, there is a fire, that, eh, the people is dying, the people need oxygen, that's the emergency. But that one, I don't consider it like emergency.
I understand, and, and probably what we should do is change the language of, of what, of, of, put more definition of what that means. But, uh, it is a motion on the table, properly second, and if there is no discussion, I'll call the question. Discussion? No? Okay, I'll call the question, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Uh, Madam, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Marmo?
Yes.
Council Santiago?
No.
Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Council Luzon?
No.
Councilor, uh, LaPlante?
No.
Council Levy is noted as absent, and Council Infante, Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President?
I vote yes, I think we need six.
I think he, yeah, he only five.
So we need seven for the emergency?
Was late filed, wouldn't have to declare the emergency.
No problem.
Uh, we're going back to seven, uh, Monday, February?
Next Tuesday, 7:00 PM.
Next Tuesday, 7:00.
We have two items, so we're gonna do, yeah, we have two items for budget, one, one item for personnel, so we're gonna do Personnel Committee Wednesday at 6:00, and Budget and Finance Wednesday at 6:30.
All right, and then, uh, any other committee, uh, housing, you have an item, uh, safety, safety, uh, councilor, uh, housing, line, safety, economic development. Uh, any other needs? No other needs, we move forward with the, with the, with the agenda, going to the next.
Motion, yeah?
Second.